Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who gets the dog today?
I'm dogly.
Betty.
Jim.
Something wrong now?
Jim.
Oh, okay. Commissioner, I don't want you to have a microphone. Our quote for today: "When in charge, ponder; when in doubt, mumble; when in trouble, delegate."
Not so good.
No.
Cockapoo. Look at this. She even got a permanent for today. Oh, isn't she beautiful? Lori, check this out.
I like it.
Oh, look at this. It must be on. This week's featured pet at our Lorraine County Dog Kennel is a female Cocker Spaniel. You said cockapoo. Either way, she's beautiful.
Probably doesn't shed.
That's what I was just thinking. Probably doesn't shed. Wonderful dog.
She was picked up by Burger King in Sheffield Township on State Route 57. She is in cage number 29 and is eligible for adoption this Saturday, August 25th, at 3:00 p.m. Oh, look at that. What a pretty girl. Isn't she beautiful? She makes somebody a very nice pet. Come on down to our dog kennel and pick yourself a pet.
Madam Clerk?
At 10 o'clock, Domestic Relations will be here for regards to family court issues. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
No investments appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advances and amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Airport, approve an interim management agreement with Johnson Aviation. Authorized County Minister to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, per last due form. Agreement is effective September 1st, 2007, with the first period at four months thereafter effective quarterly with a 30-day bring and cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Airport, approve an interim management agreement with Johnson Aviation. Authorized County Minister to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, per last due form. Agreement is effective September 1st, 2007, with the first period at four months thereafter effective quarterly with a 30-day bring and cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I need a brief executive session to conclude a regular board meeting today. I have potential new hires out with the county nursing home and also want to update you on the labor negotiations with the Teamsters.
Darn.
And a purchase of real estate issue that we've been working on. So those are the three issues. They're all permitted by the Sunshine Law, and it shouldn't be too long.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I meant to ask on number nine, is the agreement the same amount? Because it didn't have a dollar amount. Is it the same as before? More or less?
It's the same dollar amount, and this is an agreement that we've had in place since we've taken over in January. It's automatically been renewing every quarter. The issue is, it really ought to be in the name of the county commissioners and not the regional airport authority, since it's out of business. So that's what it really is, is cleaning that up.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Approve and waive the reading of the same for the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
That was for August 9th, before she was rudely interrupted.
Well, she stopped.
Okay. Now his left ankle's bleeding.
Yeah. It's okay. I'm used to getting kicked around.
Amendment Resolution 07597 on August 16th, 2007, approving an interim agreement with KS Associates in Delaria in the Mountain Etiquette 2200 for the drainage issues at Job and Family Services Building, 42485 Northridge Road. Sent amendment is to reflect the total costs of $4,400 to be paid from account building and grounds contract services, causes for a topographic survey and existing condition review, preliminary evaluation.
So moved. Questions?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordez?
Yes, sir.
We're doing a topographic survey and a review of the existing conditions. What was completed last year when they had a couple options for us to try and fix the issues, or do you think it's just gone farther than what the original?
Well, it has gone farther. They came out and they did work with us, but they did not do an official survey of the grounds. What we need to do now, if you've been by the Job and Family Service Building, you'll know the back elevations are significantly higher than where our property is.
The storage area?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's been built up over a number of years. Now, we do have an easement across our property, and they are draining water off their property onto our property. And we have to figure out how to divert some of that water, because as they've graded their property up top to a storm drain that dumps into our storm drain, we're taking a lot of water off that property. And that's one of the reasons we're overloading our drains back there behind the building. I was out there several months ago, and we do have a fairly sizable storm pipe and drain that we did put in, new drains behind that building, but we're just taking too much water. There's a lot of roof area there that is bringing a lot of water into those drains. And then the property up top, because it's compacted, chip and seal, is taking almost all that water. There's not a lot of it percolating, and it's all coming through that easement on that pipe into our drain. So once we get this study done, then I want to talk with council about the need for them, even though they have an easement, and they have an easement to tap into our storm sewer there. I think that they're going to have to be responsible for some of the cost that we need to upgrade back there. We shouldn't have to bear that all alone. So we're going to have to look at the legal issue, but I don't know what they are yet until we do this survey.
Okay.
And then, as you and I briefly discussed the other day, we're probably going to have to look at a swell area or a retention area just south of the building over there. Just so you know, I mean, we do have, we did make improvements to the sanitary, excuse me.
Storm sewer.
The storm sewer back there, and we're still overloading. And during this big downpour of rain, we had our maintenance people on station out there with extra pumps in case we took on too much water, so we can pump the water off and into that property south of us. So this is a start. Whatever we're going to do, it's not going to be completely inexpensive. It's going to cost some dollars.
Did we not construct or have constructed a drain down that street across Elyria Avenue a number of years ago?
That would probably go back into the 90s when the building was renovated. I do know that our storm sewer does go out there, onto that drain out there.
We did increase that drainage there, too, with the county engineer.
We have, and I would say about four years ago, we dug up the whole back of the building, and we put in a bigger line back there. And if you go back there, you'll see some serious storm grates back there, taking that water off the back of the property. So it's not as if we haven't done anything over there. It's, we've been getting some of these hard rains, and it's overloading the system. And it's beyond my ability to completely understand why in our maintenance department, so we need some experts in here. And they're going to have to give us some strong recommendations, because we continue to battle this problem, and we're losing. We need to get ahead of it.
There's been changes to the property to the south of us that's impeding water onto our property, though?
Well, the property that's south of us on the storage unit up there, they've graded their property. The elevation's probably about, I don't know, two and a half feet higher than ours. And what they've done is they've graded their property down to their drain, so they have it swelling into the drain, and it's putting a lot of, it's taxing our storm sewer on our property. I think, unprofessionally, because I'm not a professional in this, but I think that if we weren't taking their runoff, we may be able to handle it with our drains that we have. But there is a definite tie-in from their sewer into ours, and it is permitted by, there was an old easement on the property, and it was an old agreement when we purchased the property back in the 90s that allowed for that to happen. But as they've built up on that property, they've graded it more, and we're getting more and more water. They've built a lot of storage units up there, and that's taking a lot of the surface area away, so there's less and less water percolating, and more and more of it coming our way. And so I know last year, when we had the big rains, I have a motorhome stored up there, so I'm on that property occasionally. It got so bad up there, they were trenching that property up there, and trenching the water over to the drain to take water off that property. I don't think, and they're not bad neighbors, I don't want to give you the opinion that they are. It's just, when it was an old drive-in up there, when those easements went in, it was some loose gravel and chip, and a lot of that water percolated down into the ground, and we didn't get as much of it, less and less. The more surface area they take with the buildings, the more problems we're going to get, and I think that's what.
So it's time to upgrade our storm sewer?
Well, I want to see if we are solely responsible for the upgrade, because the volume of water off that property has increased significantly, and we need to see which way. And if you go even further south of that property in front of there, when it rains heavily, there's a small horse farm there, you'll see that it becomes a horse lake over there. So there's also a lot of water going in. It's a very bad drainage area, because the elevations are just almost like a rolling elevation through there, and it pulls up on the south side of the storage property, and then we take it into the storm drain on the north side. So we need to look at a broader area. But I don't want to solve one problem, then find out we got another problem coming from a different angle.
Thank you.
The other issue, a couple weeks ago, I'd asked for a copy of inspection reports. I still have not received it. It's been two, three weeks now.
I have a package that was sent over earlier this week from Job and Family Services. I questioned some of the documents I thought were not there, that I said we had something else. Sandy will can give you today what I got so far, but I have extra more, because my understanding is when we had the union members in for their walkthrough, I don't know, about two years ago, maybe a little bit longer, maybe three, they had brought down some, an industrial hygienist with them to walk through, and I had understood that they prepared a report, and that we got a copy. I can't, I don't have that copy, and I thought it was out there. Maybe they didn't, but I have requested that they look and see if there's more information. But I can certainly give you what we got. I just wanted to give you a complete package. So I'll give you what we got now, and hopefully we'll get some more information. I remember the industrial hygienist being down, and the safety folks from Detroit, and going through the building, and being satisfied that we had resolved issues. There was about three or four of them that came in, but I don't see any written materials from them. And maybe we would never granted a courtesy copy of what they did, but they didn't come back after that with any other concerns. But I would like to see if that's available to you.
Okay.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, instruct the clerk to schedule a public hearing to be held Thursday, October 4th, 2007, at 10:00 a.m. to place permanent county maintenance on Songbird Subdivision, LaGrange Township. Notice to be published in the Chronicle on September 27th. Residents notified by certified mail on September 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise a public hearing to be held Thursday, October 4th, at 10:15 a.m. to place permanent county maintenance on Greystone Point Subdivision, Brownhound Township. Notice to be published in the Chronicle on September 27th. Residents notified by certified mail on September 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor, authorize employment attorney Subudu Chandra in the Mountain Etiquette 45,000 to provide representation of Mark R. Stewart in imminent litigation from the city of Lorraine regarding community reinvestment area number four, in accordance with the Ohio Reinvest Code 305.14A. Authorized Dennis P. Will, Lorraine County Prosecutor, submit an application for said employment to Court of Common Pleas and to be paid from the real estate assessment fund.
Commissioners, I would request that we have an executive session regarding this matter before we act on it.
Agreed.
I can't comment. I have to recuse myself.
Mark Stewart will be in attendance?
I've invited him to come. Yes, sure.
Mr. Cordez, County prosecutor?
I don't have any commentary reports this morning. Thank you.
Ms. Attorney and Assistant County Prosecutor?
I don't have any other issues.
Commissioners' report.
Last Thursday, after the meeting, I did go out to the Lorraine, or the, after Lorraine Ford plant, the Ohio Assembly Plant with Betty Sutton and representatives from Governor Strickland's office and Sheriff Brown's office, and everybody is so committed to helping keep that plan afloat, as well as, I'm sure, the commissioners, you know, at countywide, statewide, federal. They're very committed to either having more of the suppliers on site to help with transportation issues. Costs are astronomical. And then Tuesday, Betty Sutton and I toured Vocational Guidance Center, which is here in Elyria on Lowell Street, and they do such a fabulous job there, trying to employ the unemployable, and they do a great job for Lorraine County. I'm very proud of them. And I'm very proud of Betty for being so conscientious and really caring about what's happening in Lorraine County. So that's all I have.
Ms. Blair?
I have no report today. Come to the fair.
No report?
Come to the fair. Come to the fair.
Had an opportunity to meet with Ann Hill from Governor Strickland's office Friday morning prior to tag with some issues in Lorraine County, and they seem very attentive, and the governor seems on top of what's happening here. Also, we had our Transportation Advisory Committee meeting at Noacka. After some long discussion, it was pushed forward to go to the governing board for voting on approving the Avon interchange next month. I thought Commissioner Blair would have some comments on that. It was a very exciting meeting. I was down at Black River Landing on Saturday. They did their Taste of History, it was very nice. The winery did a nice job with large turnout. Fair breakfast was wonderful. It was wet, but they did a nice job for about 80% of us who showed up. I also attended, South Hurry Neighborhood Development opened up a new office on Middle Avenue. They had a very nice turnout, a lot of people involved there, Mayor Grace, Ken Burkhardt from the city council. Also got the opportunity to meet Dr. Atkinson, the new superintendent of Lorraine City Schools. I was met with her Wednesday morning, and she seems on the ball, and she's got a lot of great ideas. Let's hope she's able to implement them with the funding restrictions they have. Sort of feels like being a county commissioner, I told her.
Yes, she understands.
And last night.
Yes, she understands.
Yes, she understands. I was at Lorraine County Community College last night for the Noacka public hearing on the Avon interchange. 150 people, I would guess, were there with a lot of good comments. Pro and con, that's what a public forum's for. And I also like to say, welcome to the premier soccer academy students who started school at Amherst Schools yesterday. So thank you very much, under my report. Madam Clerk?
I don't have anything. Madam Clerk, as well?
With the reading of your way.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone like to comment from the floor? Welcome, Rego Revra, I'm former councilman from Lorraine.
I almost didn't recognize him in the elevator. He looks so casual today.
Yeah, I'm telling you, he's not dressed up, no tie. Doesn't quite look like Rego. You retired now?
I'm retired, correct.
Oh, okay.
I retired in February from Fifth Third Bank in Lorraine. And just got a part-time job with the community thing as a nurturer and ticket taker, so I'm relaxing now.
Welcome to our meeting.
No, basically, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. The concern that I have is the request from Mark Stewart, our auditor, requesting money for his defense pending litigation from the city of Lorraine, Ohio regarding that 100% 15-year tax abatement. One of the residents who has applied for this abatement and have correspondents saying that it has been approved pending the certification by the Lorraine County Auditor, which hasn't happened in quite some time. There are many, many homeowners are upset with the whole process. We were all led to believe that it was approved, and it was just a matter of formality. The law director from the city of Lorraine approved it. I understand the, Mr. Dennis Will, the county prosecutor, has also approved this, and it's just a matter of formality, waiting for Mark Stewart to approve the whole process so we can continue with this. This process started last year, when I went to a meeting of my neighbor's home, and everybody was informed about the possibility of this tax abatement being available to us. I live at 4477 Santana Way, Camden Beach Development, a development that was pulled together by Ryan Homes and the Campana people, and we have 155 homes in that area, and I believe that almost all of us have applied for this tax abatement. And we were led to believe that it was already a done deal, it was approved, there was a process. We paid our fees, we signed a contract, we had a title company come to our home, we got papers. It seems like it was a done deal. And early in the year, we got a letter from Mark Stewart's office saying that it was not approved, that it was not right. Then we got another letter from the city of Lorraine, not to worry about Mark Stewart's office, and it was okay. Then we got another letter saying from Mark Stewart, we just recently, last week, that based on his opinion, and I question that opinion, I personally don't believe that he has the authority to stop this based on the legislation that city council in Lorraine passed out several years ago. There was two ordinances, one in 1989, and then it was amended in 2006, and the Tax Review Committee of City Council approved it, and just the wheels are going smoothly until we have a small setback now. So I just urge the commissioners not to approve the request from the county auditor to proceed with pending litigation. I believe this is a done deal, and we should go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rego.
Doug, are the domestic relations judges attending this meeting this morning, or?
No.
Oh, they're not? Okay. Judge Burti, our day, he thought they were coming.
No, they had intended to come at 10:00. We were informed that they should come at 10:00.
Okay.
And then when I got the, when I received the agenda, I saw that there was nothing listed, but I know that they, on our copy of the agenda for us to be here, so I was a little confused, but.
It wasn't on the draft, but it's on the.
He doesn't see the draft, but it is on this.
Oh, it is on yours? Because it wasn't on the one that I received.
Yeah, it's under appointments.
Okay. So yeah, they will still be here at 10:00.
Okay.
Want to take a five-minute recess?
Unless you want to, I see Mr. Horvath in the back. Do we want?
Oh, Judge Horvath, do you want to speak?
One just.
Will we call the meeting back, order please?
Oh, okay.
The judge has arrived. Judge Berta?
Here come the judge.
Here come the judge?
Judge Boros is on.
Oh, Judge Boros, I didn't see you. Okay, you got here ahead of Judge Berta, I'm sorry.
Here come the judges.
Here come the judges.
Here come the judges.
The judges are coming.
Are there any additional questions? Because I, he probably knows more than I do. He's been in this business longer than I have.
I would never say that publicly, though.
I'm an honest man. Don't laugh.
Hit that security system in yet, Judge?
I did.
Good man.
Yeah, my wife thinks I'm going overboard. I want a dog that only speaks German now, and cameras all over the place, and so, yeah. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak to you once again. What I did was send a letter to the commissioners, and I assume they all got that letter.
I have that in front of me.
Correct.
Okay. Is that correct? Okay. What that letter indicated after I spoke with Judge Bezinski and Judge Boros was that we were willing to put this off for full implementation until 2010, of course, subject to other budgetary constraints, and I understand that. What that would mean is, who knows what the budget will be in 2010. We're in '07 right now, so that's a two-year differential between now and then. So a lot may change by then. Some may be good, some may be bad. I mean, we know what we're in. But we wanted to be as helpful as possible in understanding that, as Mr. Kelo had presented last time, that his main concern was the budget, and that's what he's here to run. And he had indicated he doesn't necessarily make the court decisions, because that's for the judges to make those decisions, and I appreciate that. And I think that's why this is a fair proposal, saying that we understand the budget is tight right now. Although, speaking with Mr. Messer, there may be a way to make this work with zero dollars right now. It may be kind of complicated to do, I'm not sure, but what this in essence does is gives one-year delay. And that one-year delay may in fact mean that we can pursue other avenues, such as grants, things of that nature through various entities, and figure out, quite frankly, how that will go. I know the build-out's also been a concern right now, too. That will delay that then. So in essence, it will keep things at status quo until then. But we would ask you to rescind your proposal, rescinding your resolution that rescinded the other resolution. And I think that's where it became confusing of Judge Horvath and myself, I just spoke with Judge Horvath previously, when I put in my letter that he didn't have a problem with this. We were a little confused about rescinding what you're rescinding. So that's why he came today to indicate his belief in this, and he did provide a letter, and I appreciate that. So certainly, I wasn't trying to throw him under the bus. I think he knows that. But, okay. So what I wanted to do is basically address that in that regard, because I know the Commissioners are in a bind here with finances, and we appreciate that, too. I know we're 10% down as well, and it is difficult to run a budget that we have with 10% down.
Only five now, we gave half the back. Only five now.
All right, I still feel overworked, so...
And underpaid.
And underpaid, yes. But that's up to the state whether they want to pass the Judicial Compensation Act, but that's later. Nonetheless, we respect that, and I think that the Commissioners have certainly addressed the correct issue as to whether this could be financially feasible right now. Certainly, I'm sure all the Commissioners have heard from many of the attorneys, I certainly have, too, because I'm the new guy in the court, they want to put a bug in my ear whether they like this proposal or not. And what I've indicated to them are twofold. One, I said, you probably should have brought this up several years ago, when this was being implemented, because that would have been a little bit more prudent time period to do that. And secondly, if that's your feeling, maybe perhaps more hearing should be warranted for that. In other words, don't rush into that either way right now. And that's basically what I'm asking, and I think the court is, too. Don't rush into rescinding the resolution if we're willing to, in fact, not implement that until at least 2010, meaning would we not implement it, keep it as it is, but it wouldn't rescind Family Court, it would still remain in effect, but one judge, and then judge that would ever be elected would handle only probate matters in 2009, with the understanding that very well likely could be handling the full areas of law in 2010. Of course, depending on the budget, once again.
Well, that's where I got your, not to interrupt you, Judge.
Yes.
Where I got your letter, and when I called you yesterday on it. "We believe that the Family Court concept has substantial merit," is what you said in your letter. "As such, we are asking the Board to rescind Resolution 7-553 dated August 2, 2007, which the majority of the Board passed. We're willing to postpone the implementation of Family Court until 2010." My only part on that, which I'm still reviewing, going over, is I'd like to add it based on Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' ability to fund such court. I'd like to leave that still under the Commissioners, that we have the ability to fund. If you go to implement, we still don't have the money and haven't passed the sales tax in three years, and the issues are more dire than they are now, I think that still falls on us.
I agree. I agree, number one was that.
The only thing I'd like to see added at this point until I go through, but this has been a very, I cannot believe the amount of phone calls I've received from people about domestic, I had no clue what went on domestic or probation, other than divorce I did, you know, 15 years ago. You talk about a contentious issue and opinions. Everywhere I go, I mean, similar to you, too, all these people coming out of the woodwork, so.
Exactly.
Judge Horvath called that he'd like to, you know, have a couple words, did Frank leave now, and I didn't know what his response was?
No, he's still here.
Oh, there you are, Judge, you moved. You're hopping around, okay. But I mean, as you said in your letter, a hot-button issue the last several months, I had no clue. We're doing a budget move up here.
I understand. And that's what I'd like, and I think our court would like to do, too, is keep this strictly, right now, a financial issue.
That's what it is to me, I mean...
If we start getting into, well, maybe it shouldn't have been implemented, and then there's all political considerations, and I know personally I'd like to keep it out of that regard, no matter what way it goes, to make it political, and I'm certainly, I don't believe the Commissioners have at this point. I've spoke with you, Mr. Kalo, and you've definitely told me this is strictly financial on my part, and you've assured me that, right now, that is all it is, and I believe you.
Well, that's where we're coming down, it's dollars and cents in two years, and we're trying to make sure we can meet that budget.
And I'm sure there'll be open discourse from now until potentially, even if it can be funded, through other attorneys objecting, but it certainly gives them plenty of time to indicate why they disagree with Family Court.
No, that's not my issue, that's what you judges can handle.
Agree, really, and ultimately, it's none of our issues. It almost comes down to what the state legislature's going to do. And we know how the laws get passed down there, it's basically trade-offs a lot of times, and that's politics. You don't want to watch sausage being ground out, nor the law, so it's all the same. And that's not of our hands, it's out of your hands, it's out of my hands, I can make 50 calls, you can make 50, it doesn't matter. I mean, it really comes to...
The thing I'd like to reconsider is give me a week to go over this letter and...
Not a problem. If you need anything additionally from us, we would be glad to do that. Mr. Messer's here, because he knows the finances much better than I do, and he would indicate that, he indicated to me as well, that it actually could work this year, except for the build-out part, that we could actually come up with almost zero. It would be certainly a strain on many parties, but it probably could work this year, so...
This year, but is that ongoing, staying that way? Would it be staying that way, not additional funds?
Yes. That's why I brought him along, I don't want to answer for him.
I'll look at that proposal also, if you've got a zero.
Right. So that's a potential, too, and the reason I said put it off to '10 is, obviously, a lot can change by then, who knows what'll change by then?
Let's hope for the better.
Exactly. Hopefully for the better, and there's also, obviously, grants that we're lucky enough as Domestic Relations Court to be able to get where a lot of other courts can't, just because of what we do with children and so forth, so...
Commissioners, any comments, questions? Mr. Messer, do you have something you want to present?
Did you indicate this now that you wanted to wait till Judge Bezinski was...
No, I mean, to make a decision, no, but he said, I want to go over the letter again, I was working on some adjustments, and I called Judge Burti yesterday before me, Judge Bezinski wasn't in town this week, he was on vacation.
Oh, okay.
So, but you had a zero proposition?
There are...
Here you go. Doug, we got to bring you up here. Thank you, Judge Berta.
Thank you. There are three different revenue accounts that both Probate and our court have that would potentially offset, you know, because they are funded in such a way that they can be used for salary accounts. And one of your biggest concerns, obviously, was the salaries, the staff that would have to be implemented in this situation, and we could, you know, we could certainly fund, for the foreseeable future, three of those positions.
Which positions? Prosecutors or yours?
No, the prosecutors, and part of my, part of the proposal that I had discussed with Judge Berta and Judge Boros and Judge Bezinski, was the idea that we initially, we would look at not having to fund the additional prosecutor, their secretary, nor two of the magistrates, because we could potentially share the, you know, with the existing caseload, you know, as it stands now, we could share the existing magistrates with that fourth judge, with that fourth Family Court judge. We would review that on an annual basis to look at both caseload and budgetary constraints to indicate whether or not that was a possibility. And that has been discussed with the prosecutor's office, and Dennis Will has actually signed a letter indicating that he, as long as there is no additional juvenile docket among the magistrates, he would not have, and he would not have a problem with that. We could certainly forward that letter to you.
Please do, yeah.
The proposal that Judge Berta sent was a replacement for that scenario, just to put it off, for, you know, put the implementation at all off for an additional year. But what that additional option was feasible for 2009 to, you know, to negate any out-of-pocket expenses. As you know, the only requirement that we would have would be the build-out on the shelf for the magistrate that would come on, on the second floor, which could be done down to bond dollars for the Justice Center. And even with whatever discrepancies that, you know, the auditor feels in terms of the use of the bond dollars, in that this would be new construction, as opposed to, you know, refurbishing or other kinds of use of the money, they would, I'm sure they would accept that as a legitimate expense for those bond dollars. So that's, you know, there would be no additional general fund dollars, particularly if we left the clerks and the probate where they were. You know, part of the plan was for the current probate magistrate to continue to see all and do all those probate issues, as he has done very well over, you know, over the years that he's been in that position. So there would be essentially not a great deal of change, other than the fact that there would potentially be some shifting of offices.
Can you send me an outline of that with the dollars and cents on it?
I would be more than happy to do that.
Judge Horvath, you were here.
Judge Boros.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judge Boros. She didn't say she was, well, I talked to Judge Burti, she said I'll be...
Just here for moral support.
I think they've covered it.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Madam Commissioners, Mr. Kalo, administrators, fellow judges, and guests, I'm here to voice my objection to the Family Court concept. I have opposed it right from the beginning, in 1999, when it was first brought to your attention. Of course, the two of you were not on the Board at that time, and I continued at this date to oppose it. And I wasn't here on August 2, when you revoked the Family Court and went back to the pure probate concept. And I lodged you for your vote, obviously. I don't see any reason, at this point, for that resolution to be rescinded. I mean, if you care to review it in 2010, that's fine. You have the authority to review it at any time. And I'm not here to tell you not to review it in 2010, or 2009, or 2011. Review it at any time. But there's no reason, no reason to change your vote and go back to a unified Family Court system. And I'll tell you why. Currently, the Probate Court, our Probate Court, which I think is one of the best around, it's effective, it's efficient, and we serve our constituents, and we serve them well. And we're on a budget of $581,590. Our budget in 2002 is $580,000. We're up $11,000 from 2002 to 2007. And not only are we on that type of a budget, we give back to the county, after we pay our expenses, $170,000 generally. According to my figures, that's a little over $400,000. For $400,000, we're running that Probate Court, and that's cheap by other Probate Court standards of budget and other courts. That's damn cheap, and that's a bargain. And if you look at it, how much it costs each constituent in Lorraine County, it's costing them about two bucks a year. So my argument is this: Why should we change, for a couple of years, something that's proven, it's effective, it's efficient, and it's cheap? I don't have to do any further budgeting, I don't have to cut a magistrate here, I don't have to do anything that they have to do. I don't have to. I can continue during my term to give the constituents of Lorraine County an effective and efficient Probate Court at a reasonably moderate cost. Now, if you choose in 2010 to review the issue, revisit it, so be it. And if your choice at that time is a Family Court concept, you can vote it. But I don't see any reason to do it now. And then you may have to revoke it in 2010. My figures are stable. They come from the auditor, you can look at the last five years, they're all stable. You may not have the funds in 2010 to implement the Unified Family Court. My court is not based on any subsidies, any grants that they're looking for. I can do it for what you're giving me. As a matter of fact, what was it, about five weeks ago, I appeared before this body, and you asked me, do you need any additional money? And what did I tell you? No. I can do my job and do it effectively with the money I have. I don't think they told you the same thing. So what I'm saying to you, essentially, keep the Probate Court as it is. 2010, you see a reason to change it? That's your option, that's within your authority. But I'm doing a good job as it is, there's no complaints. And the outcry for this Family Court is not from your constituents, it's not from the lawyers, it's from the Family Court proponents of the Domestic and Juvenile Court. So keep it alive, the pure probate. As a matter of fact, just in passing, and this has nothing to do with finances, I just want you to know this, that if the Family Court concept was so good, why aren't more courts going to it? As a matter of fact, Lorraine County would be the largest county in the state of Ohio to have a Family Court concept, the largest. None of the large counties are going to it, because it puts a lot of pressure on one judge. He's got to know juvenile law, domestic law, probate law. I've got enough just knowing probate without having to know the other two. So my recommendation is, keep the resolution of August the 2 in effect until such time as it meets your budget constraints, and if 2010, 11, 12, whenever you see fit to do it, if you do, God bless you. Thank you.
Judge Horvath?
Yes.
Nobody's saying that you're not doing a great job, you are doing a great job.
Thank you.
But this has all been mandated by the state, correct? So really...
Mandated by who?
Didn't the state legislature pass the...
Only on your recommendation and your resolution in 2004. If you would have not had a resolution in 2004, the state would not have mandated it. There is no action anywhere in the state of Ohio to mandate Family Courts.
We were basically a test county, correct? Judge Boros, Judge Berta wasn't here. Based on four counties, weren't we one of four in the original test?
I don't know that, I don't know that we were a test county. We...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll join Judge Boros.
Okay.
Please do.
I don't know that we were a test county, because we never implemented Family Court.
One of the original four, though, Claremont, Fire, Mercer...
Well, we were part of the feasibility study that you received for purposes of Family Court, and for purposes of why Lorraine County and why not some of the other larger jurisdictions. If you recall, when Judge Bezinski was here, and we had an opportunity to kind of give a little history about Family Court, location, 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 location. We are prime for a Family Court based upon the fact that the Commissioners and the citizens of Lorraine County have put us all in one location, in one building. And that's why, even for purposes, if you read that feasibility study, that was one of the things that was outlined. Location was so, so important. As a matter of fact, it's location that is going to dictate the success or the effectiveness of Family Court, as well as, I would hope, presuming that all of the judges and their personnel are effective at their jobs, which certainly no one has ever challenged the fact that Probate Court runs very, very efficiently. And Judge Horvath has never challenged that we run our courts any less...
Excuse me, Judge Boros, I didn't want to get in a discussion about Family Court.
Right.
Just the whole mandated, so there was a clarification. That's all I want to do.
Right.
I'm here talking about the budget, how you guys run your courts is up to you judges, so, I mean, that's not my position. I'm not an attorney, I've never been a judge, so...
Yeah, but it was all about location. And the feasibility study, yes, it indicated that we are a county that would be able to run an effective Family Court.
And it was voluntary, it wasn't mandated, is what I'm saying. It was voluntary by the Board of Commissioners, it wasn't mandated by, I think Commissioner Kowski was saying it was mandated by the state of Ohio.
Because, well, in 1999, when you went to the state...
Well, it is now, because there's legislation out there. We had, and in deference, yes, we had all of these hearings then.
Right.
And that's why I'm not going to go into it, because, as you said, you told us it was budgetary, and we were here to present zero, which is what you requested.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, yes. That's where I wanted to get to.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any further questions of me?
No.
Appreciate the background, Judge, you said the majority of the Board wasn't here when these discussions was made. Trying to look at...
Neither was I. I was never noticed at the hearing in 2004. I was never noticed, so I wasn't here. So I was never able to defend...
That's a very accurate statement, Judge.
Thank you.
So did you want to wait until next week to make a determination on this issue?
Yeah, I want to go over it, and then Mr. Messer has more information to make his... Oh, there he is, okay, I was looking for you, Doc.
He's going to give it to all of us, not just you.
I mean, all of us, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, ma'am.
All right. We all want to have playing cards.
Any comments from the public whatsoever, if you afford the other information? Thank you very much, Judge Horvath, Judge Burti, Judge Boros, and Doug Messer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any more public comment while we're out here?
Thank you for your time.
Our motion to move to executive session is outlined by County Administrator and County Prosecutor.
A second.
Aye.
Ms. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children are educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and, obviously, stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that, quite frankly, shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house, simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights, we have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, we have operational railroad crossings, we also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say, left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, oh, ooh! And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track, do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run. And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and, no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look... wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without...
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's, like, cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road, so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross with the outside of the box, then I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good, because I didn't know that you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids, if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town, and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road. I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who gets the dog today?
I need a dog lady.
Jim.
Something wrong, huh?
Jim.
Yeah, I can.
Oh, okay. I don't want you to have a microphone. Our quote for today, "When in charge, ponder; when in doubt, mumble; when in trouble, delegate."
Not so good.
No.
Look at this.
She even got a permanent for today.
Oh, isn't she beautiful? Lori, check this out.
I like it.
Oh, look at this. It must be on. This week's featured pet at our Lorraine County Dog Kennel is a female Cocker Spaniel. You said cockapoo. Either way, she's beautiful.
Probably doesn't shed.
That's what I was just thinking. Probably doesn't shed. Wonderful dog.
She was picked up by Burger King in Sheffield Township on State Route 57. She is in cage number 29 and is eligible for adoption this Saturday, August 25th, at 3:00 p.m. They, oh, look at that. What a pretty girl. Yes. Isn't she beautiful?
Mm-hmm.
Somebody a very nice pet. Come on down to our dog kennel and pick yourself a pet.
Madam Clerk?
At 10 o'clock, Domestic Relations will be here for regards to family court issues, under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
No investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Advances and requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the airport, approve an interim management agreement with Johnson Aviation, authorized County Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, per last form. Agreement is effective September 1st, 2007, with the first period at four months thereafter, effective quarterly with a 30-day bring-cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdictions of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I lead a brief executive session to conclude a regular board meeting today. I have a potential new hire that's with the county nursing home, and also want to update you on the labor negotiations with the Teamsters. And a purchase of real estate issue that we've been working on. So those are three issues. They're all permitted by the Sunshine Law, and it shouldn't be too long.
Before we go on, I meant to ask on number nine, is the agreement the same amount? Because it didn't have a dollar amount, is it the same as before, more or less?
It's the same dollar amount, and this is an agreement that we've had in place since we've taken over in January. It's automatically been renewing every quarter. The issue is, it really ought to be in the name of the County Commissioners and not the regional airport authority, since it's out of business. So that's what it really is, is cleaning that up.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Approve and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye, that was for August 9th, before she was rudely interrupted.
Well, she stopped.
Okay.
She stopped.
Okay, now his left ankle's bleeding.
It's okay, I'm used to getting kicked around.
Amendment Resolution 07597 on August 16, 2007, approving an interim agreement with KS Associates, Inc., to Larry and the Mountain Act, exceed 2,200 for the drainage issues at Job and Family Services Building, 42485 North Ridge Road. Sent amendment is to reflect the total costs of $4,400 to be paid from account building and grounds contract services, costs for topographic survey and existing condition review preliminary evaluation.
So moved. Questions?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordez?
Yes, sir. We're doing a topographic survey and a review of the existing conditions. What was completed last year when they had a couple options for us to try and fix the issues, or they think it's just gone farther than what the original? Well, it has gone, it has gone farther. They came out and they did work with us, but they did not do an official survey of the grounds. What we need to do now, if you've been by the Job and Family Service Building, you'll know that the back elevations are significantly higher than where our property is.
The storage area.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's been built up over a number of years. Now, we do have an easement across our property, and they are draining water off their property onto our property. And we have to figure out how to divert some of that water, because as they've graded their property up top to a storm drain that dumps into our storm drain, we're taking a lot of water off that property, and that's one of the reasons we're overloading our drains back there behind the building. I was out there several months ago, and we do have a fairly sizable storm pipe and drains that we did put in, new drains behind that building, but we're just taking too much water. There's a lot of roof area there that is bringing a lot of water into those drains, and then the property up top, because it's compacted chip and seal, is taking almost all that water. There's not a lot of it percolating, and it's all coming through that easement on that pipe into our drain. So once we get the study done, then I want to talk with council about the need for them, even though they have an easement, and they have an easement to tap into our storm sewer there, I think that they're going to have to be responsible for some of the cost that we need to upgrade back there. We shouldn't have to bear that all alone. So we're going to have to look at the legal issue, but I don't know what they are yet until we do this survey.
Okay.
And then, as you and I briefly discussed the other day, we're probably going to have to look at a swell area or a retention area just south of the building over there. Just so you know, I mean, we do have, we did make improvements to the sanitary, excuse me.
Storm sewer.
The storm sewer back there, and we're still overloading, and during this big downpour rain, we had our maintenance people on station out there with extra pumps in case we took on too much water, so we can pump the water off and into that property south of us. So this is, this is a start. Whatever we're going to do, it's not going to be completely inexpensive. It's going to cost some dollars.
Did we not construct or have constructed a drain down that street across Alariah Avenue a number of years ago?
That would probably go back into the 90s when the building was renovated. I do know that our storm sewer does go out there, onto that drain out there.
We did increase that drainage there, too, with the county engineer.
We have, we, and I would say about four years ago, we dug up the whole back of the building, and we put in a bigger line back there. If you go back there, you'll see some serious storm grates back there, taking that water off the back of the property. So it's not as if we haven't done anything over there. It's, we've been getting some of these hard rains, and it's overloading the system, and it's beyond my ability to completely understand why in our maintenance department, so we need some experts in here, and they're going to have to give us some strong recommendations, because we continue to battle this problem, and we're losing, and we need to get ahead of it.
There's been changes to the property to the south of us that's impeding water onto our property, though?
Well, the property that's south of us on the storage unit up there, they've graded their property, the elevation's probably about, I don't know, two and a half feet higher than ours. And what they've done is they've graded their property down to their drain, so they have it swelling into the drain, and it's putting a lot of, it's taxing our storm sewer on our property. I think, unprofessionally, because I'm not a professional in this, but I think that if we weren't taking their runoff, we may be able to handle it with our drains that we have. But there is a definite tie-in from their sewer and ours, and it is permitted by, there was an old easement on the property, and it was an old agreement when we purchased the property back in the 90s that allowed for that to happen. But as they've built up on that property, they've graded it more, and we're getting more and more water. They've built a lot of storage units up there, and that's taking a lot of the surface area away, so there's less and less water percolating, and more and more of it coming our way. And so I know last year, we had the big rains. I have a, I have a motorhome stored up there, so I'm on that property occasionally. It got so bad up there, they were trenching that property up there, and trenching the water over to the drain to take water off that property. I don't think, they're not bad neighbors, I don't want to give you the opinion that they are, it's just when it was, when it was an old drive-in up there, when those easements went in, it was some loose gravel and chip, and a lot of that water percolated down into the ground, and we didn't get as much of it, and less and less. The more, the more surface area they take with the buildings, the more problems we're going to get, and I think that's what...
So it's time to upgrade our storm sewer.
Well, I want to see if we are solely responsible for the upgrade, because the volume of water off that property has increased significantly, and we need to see which way. And if you, if you go even further south of that property in front of there, when it rains heavily, there's a small horse farm there, you'll see that it becomes a horse lake over there. So there's also a lot of water going in. It's a very bad drainage area, because the elevations are just almost like a rolling elevator. elevation through there. And it pulls up on the south side of the storage property, and then we take it into the storm drain on the north side. So we need to look at a broader area. But I don't want to solve one problem, then find out we got another problem coming from a different angle.
Thank you.
The other issue, a couple weeks ago, I'd asked for a copy of inspection reports. I still have not received it. It's been two, three weeks now.
I have a package that was sent over earlier this week from Job and Family Services. I questioned some of the documents I thought were not there, that I was, that I said we had something else. Sandy can give you today what I got so far, but I have asked for more, because my understanding is when we had the union members in for their walkthrough, I don't know, about two years ago, maybe a little bit longer, maybe three, they had brought down some, an industrial hygienist with them to walk through, and I had understood that they prepared a report, and that we got a copy. I can't, I don't have that copy, and I thought it was out there. Maybe they didn't, but I have requested that they look and see if there's more information. But I can certainly give you what we got. I just wanted to give you a complete package. So I'll give you what we got now, and hopefully we'll get some more information. I remember the industrial hygienist being down, and the safety folks from Detroit, and going through the building and being satisfied that we had resolved issues. So there was about three or four of them that came in, but I don't see any written materials from them, and maybe we would never granted a courtesy copy of what they did. But they didn't come back after that with any other concerns. But I would like to see if that's available to you.
Okay.
Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Community Development Department support the annual comprehensive economic development strategy update for 2007, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, instruct the clerk to schedule a public hearing to be held Thursday, October 4th, 2007, at 10:00 a.m. to place permanent county maintenance on Songbird subdivision, LaGrange Township. Notice to be published in the Chronicle on September 27th, residents notified by certified mail on September 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise this public hearing to be held Thursday, October 4th at 10:15 a.m. to place permanent county maintenance on Greystone Point subdivision, Brownhound Township. Notice to be published in the Chronicle on September 27th, residents notified by certified mail on September 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor, authorize employment attorney Subudu Chandra in the Mountain Outlook seat 45,000 to provide representation of Mark R. Stewart in imminent litigation from the city of Lorraine regarding community reinvestment area number four, in accordance with the Ohio Reunited Code 305.14A. Authorize Dennis P. Will, Lorraine County Prosecutor, submit application for set employment to Court of Common Pleas and to be paid from the Real Estate Assessment Fund.
Commissioners, I would request that we have an executive session regarding this matter before we act on it.
Agreed.
I can't comment, I have to recuse myself.
Mark Stewart will be in attendance.
I've invited him to come. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister.
I don't have any commentary reports this morning. Thank you.
Minister and Assistant County Prosecutor.
I don't have any other issues.
Commissioners' report.
Last Thursday, after the meeting, I did go out to the Lorraine, or the, not the Lorraine Ford plant, the Ohio Assembly Plant with Betty Sutton and representatives from Governor Strickland's office and Sheriff Brown's office, and everybody is so committed to helping keep that plan afloat, as well as, I'm sure, the Commissioners, you know, countywide, statewide, federal. They're very committed to either having more of the suppliers on site to help with transportation issues. Costs are astronomical. And then Tuesday, Betty Sutton and I toured Vocational Guidance Center, which is here in Elaria on Lowell Street, and they do such a fabulous job there trying to employ the unemployable, and they do a great job for Lorraine County. I'm very proud of them. And I'm very proud of Betty for being so conscientious and really caring about what's happening in Lorraine County. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Blair.
I have no report today. Come to the fair.
No report after this week.
Come to the fair. Come to the fair.
Had an opportunity to meet with Ann Hill from Governor Strickland's office Friday morning prior to tag with some issues in Lorraine County, and they seemed very attentive, and the governor seems on top of what's happening here. Also, we had our Transportation Advisory Committee meeting at Noacka. After some long discussion, it was pushed forward to go to the governing board for voting on approving the Avon interchange next month. I thought Commissioner Blair would have some comments on that. It was a very exciting meeting. I was down at Black River Landing on Saturday. They did their Taste of History, it was very nice. The winery did a nice job, large turnout. Fair Breakfast was wonderful. It was wet, but they did a nice job for about 80% of us who showed up. I also attended South Lorraine Neighborhood Development opened up a new office on Middle Avenue. They had a very nice turnout, a lot of people involved there, Mayor Grace, Ken Burkhart from the City Council. Also got the opportunity to meet Dr. Atkinson, the new Superintendent of Lorraine City Schools. I was met with her Wednesday morning, and she seems on the ball, and she's got a lot of great ideas. Let's hope she's able to implement them with the funding restrictions I have. Sort of feels like being a county commissioner, I told her.
But she understands.
Yes, she understands. I was at Lorraine County Community College last night for the Noacka public hearing on the Avon interchange. 150 people, I would guess, were there with a lot of good comments, pro and con. That's what a public forum's for. And I also like to say, welcome to the premier soccer academy students who started school at Amherst Schools yesterday. So thank you very much under my report.
I don't have anything. Blair, correspondents?
With the reading be waited.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone like to comment from the floor? Welcome, Rego Revra, I'm former councilman from Lorraine.
I almost didn't recognize him in the elevator. He looks so casual today.
Yeah, I'm telling you, he's not dressed up, no tie. Doesn't quite look like Rego. You retired now?
I'm retired, correct.
Oh, okay.